Chair Patel, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, January 28th. Due to an unforeseen technical issue, this evening's Planning Commission meeting will not be streamed on YouTube Live, but is available to view on Zoom and will also be recorded and made available tomorrow on YouTube. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ashley, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Patel?
Here.
Vice Chair Nugent?
Here.
Commissioner Admetter?
Commissioner Clafter?
Here.
And Commissioner Williams is absent.
Good evening and welcome. We are excited to be here in person with options for virtual participation. As I was just saying before the meeting started, my last time on this dais was in To be back with my fellow commissioners, it's so good to see everybody again. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. And finally, we welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised, this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic if speaking to a particular agenda item. If speakers fail to follow these rules, they will be warned, and if they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. First item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Ashley, could you please read the consent calendar?
Yes. Item one, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes Approval. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 12, 2024.
Is there any member of the commission who would like to pull from any item from the consent calendar? If any members of the public wish to comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
Chair Patel, we have no public commenters.
Great. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar items.
Anyone want a second?
I second that.
Okay, and then for a vote, Chair Patel?
I am going to abstain since I was not at that meeting.
Vice Chair Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Blatter?
Yes.
Commissioner Clafter?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams is absent.
Great. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents the commission from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the commission's discretion and can be extended if the commission wishes to do so.
Chair Patel, we have no public commenters.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and close the public comment. The next item on our agenda is the General Plan 2040 Land Use Map Amendments. We will start with a staff presentation and move to public comments. Members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers. Once the public hearing is closed, the chair may ask staff to respond to any public comments, and the commission will ask clarifying questions, deliberate, and render a recommendation to the city council.
Thank you, Chair Patel and members of the Planning Commission. Summer Smith, Senior Planner, here to provide the staff presentation for Agenda Item Two, General Plan 2040 Land Use Map Amendments. Tonight's presentation will begin with the project background and description, followed by its compliance with applicable regulations, next steps, staff recommendation, and general plan interim implementation approach. On January 30, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended adoption of General Plan 2040, which was adopted by City Council on March 18, 2024. During the General Plan 2040 adoption hearings, City Council identified two sites that could provide increased flexibility and housing production potential. In the time since adoption, staff and individual landowners have identified 11 additional properties inconsistent with the existing and/or surrounding land uses. Pursuant to state and local code, the Planning Commission must provide a recommendation to the City Council at a public hearing prior to council action on amending the general plan. So staff is here tonight to seek a positive recommendation on the 13 land use map amendments. This slide shows a map of the 13 sites proposed for land use amendments, with the two sites identified by City Council, site numbers 10 and 12 boxed in blue. Site 10 consists of the office buildings at 66 and 160 Bovet Road, and Site 12 is the former Marriott Hotel, located at 1770 South Amflit Boulevard. Here is a table of the 13 sites, which provides associated addresses and existing and recommended land uses. Sites 10 and 12 identified by Council are shaded in blue, both with the recommended land use designation of mixed-use high. All remaining sites are those recommended for land use amendments to align with the existing or surrounding land uses. To name a few, Site 1, 831 Monte Diablo Avenue, has the recommended land use designation of quasi-public to align with the existing religious institutional ownership and use. Sites 2 and 3, 50 Mounds Road and 111 St. Matthews Avenue, have recommended land use designations of residential medium one to align with the existing multifamily uses. And Site 6, 9, and 11, 606 through 800 South B Street, 1495 South El Camino Real, and 1711 through 1745 South El Camino Real, all have recommended land use designations of mixed-use medium two to align with the existing and surrounding uses. If the commission wishes to view these sites and their surrounding land uses in detail, staff has backup slides with maps that show each individual site. Next, we'll move on to regulatory compliance. Measure T was placed on the November 5 ballot and approved by voters to allow the height, density, and intensity limits to exceed those set by Measure Y. It included a provision specifying that land use changes for eight of the 13 sites discussed today, but required those changes along with any future general plan land use map amendments to undergo public hearings before the Planning Commission and City Council in compliance with state and local laws. Since all 13 of the proposed land use map amendments are being processed as required by state and local laws, all recommended land use designations are consistent with Measure T and the general plan's land use element. The no net loss requirement, as implemented under the Housing Crisis Act, prohibits a city from changing the land use designation of a property to one that allows a lower density unless the city concurrently increases density on other parcels in the jurisdiction. This is to ensure that there is no net loss in residential capacity. The proposed land use amendments before you today would result in a net increase of 1,674 units of capacity and therefore would comply with the no net loss requirement. The proposed amendments are exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guidelines subsection 15168(c) and section 15162 because they are consistent with the type of allowable land uses and overall planned density and building intensity evaluated in the program Environmental Impact Report for the general plan. And the city as lead agency has determined that they will not result in any substantial changes to the general plan 2040 or circumstances under which the environmental impact report was undertaken. All meeting noticing requirements were met, including tribal consultation required under Senate Bill 18 for amendments to general plans. Staff also sent courtesy letters to all property owners and tenants of the 13 specified sites. One public comment was received, which inquired about the reduced density at the Arbor Rose condominiums. Staff responded that the reduction is just to reflect the existing townhome and single-family uses on the site and is not a change of policy from the city. Now for next steps. Following the Planning Commission public hearing and recommendation, the City Council will hold a public hearing to consider the general plan land use map amendments, which is tentatively scheduled for March 17. If approved, the general plan amendments will be effective one day after the date of the action. With that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council adoption of a resolution to amend the general plan 2040 land use map to update the land use designations at 13 specified locations. Staff would also like to note that with the passage of Measure T, there are now inconsistencies between the development standards of land use designations and zoning districts. Beginning later this year, the city's zoning ordinance will go through a comprehensive update to align with the general plan, which will take up to two years to complete. In the interim, any development standards for parcels with land use designations that do not align with their current zoning district or that lack a corresponding zoning district will default to the general plan. While the underlying zoning will remain in effect until updated, any development standards that are inconsistent with the heights, densities, intensities, and uses contained in Table LU1 of the land use element would be superseded. An interim zoning code amendment to clarify that any inconsistencies between the zoning ordinance and the general plan shall defer to general plan 2040 is currently being prepared with a public hearing before the Planning Commission anticipated for February 11. This concludes staff presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. I know that we often do public comment before questions now. Should we go ahead and open public comment?
Yes, if you would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand at this time. Okay, it looks like we have one public commenter, so the timer is going to be for three minutes. Okay, Penny, you can go ahead and unmute.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for accepting public comment this evening. Thank you for the service to our city. I would like to encourage you to go ahead and approve particularly the 831 Monte Diablo site in terms of redesignating that under Measure T to quasi-public. We are seeking to build five units, five pseudo-units on that for youth transitioning out of the foster care system and have put a lot of time, effort, and money into that project. And so hopefully this new designation would allow us to do that in hopefully a streamlined fashion. So again, speaking to the 831 Monte Diablo site, hoping that you tonight will approve the quasi-public designation for that site. As you all know, I'm sure youth transitioning out of the foster care system are at the highest risk of homelessness of pretty much any population. And currently, 60% of our youth in San Mateo County move out of the county because they cannot afford housing. There are groups working on getting housing for these young people so that they can stay and continue to be in community with really the only family they have. So you're expediting. This would mean a great deal not only to those of us working on this project, but also to the youth that it will eventually serve. And I, again, I want to thank you so much for your service and for all the great work that you do.
Thank you so much for your comment, Penny. Do we have any other public comments?
We have no more public comments at this time.
Okay, let's go ahead and close the public comment period, and then I think we can move on to questions for staff. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions?
Through the chair, I have one question. It just is relating to the comment email that we got today. And it has to do with just a clarification about, you know, ADUs. Do ADUs count towards the towards the density limits? If, say, a townhome owner wanted to add ADU, does that affect, would this affect that capacity?
Through the chair, that would not. The ADU development in multifamily projects does not count towards the base density. There is separate state law that allows for ADUs with multifamily development, and I believe recently was amended to allow for up to eight units, depending on the scale of the multifamily project.
Great, so that would allow future ADU development perhaps for homeowners in that in the the subject.
Oh, in this particular instance, so there are provisions in the ADU law that preclude ADU development in townhomes or condominiums.
Okay.
It is allowed in rental multifamily projects. On occasion, it may be possible in detached townhomes or townhomes that allow for independent access to ADUs. So they would have to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. The general plan amendments for the base density would not affect ADU development on any site.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Through the chair, I had a question about the presentation regarding the implementation of Measure T. My understanding is that it's going to be, it's going to be over, I guess it was a two-year timeframe to fully implement it?
Through the chair, Measure T went into effect on December 19, so the general plan 2040 is fully in effect at this point in time. The comprehensive zoning code amendments to align all of our zoning standards and zoning classifications with the general plan could potentially be a two-year effort. We are in the process of scoping that effort to identify what are the various phases that we could implement this project in and to bring a consultant onboard to help us accomplish the implementation of the general plan. However, Measure T is already in effect and is currently applicable to new projects.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. I had a few questions that I asked staff ahead of time. I think I'll ask one of them for the benefit of the public. I had a question around Site Number Three, and I had asked, what is the FAR of residential medium one? Because we're suggesting that the use be changed from office medium, and the table notes that office medium has a 3.0 FAR. And I was curious if by switching to residential medium one, there would be any impact to the FAR.
Through the chair. So the general plan does not assign a floor area ratio to residential land use designations. So that would be something, I believe, and someone on the dais can correct me, that would be governed by the zoning code and the zoning district that they're under.
Great, thank you. Those were all of my questions. Any more questions? Okay, so we'll proceed on to comments and discussion. I'm going to make a suggestion. I'm curious what my fellow commissioners say, that we have 13 sites on this list. I would suggest that we start at the top of the list, and if any commissioner wants to discuss the change from the current land use on general plan 2040 to the new recommended land use, that we do it site by site rather than try to have each commissioner go one at a time and then keep track of all 13 sites. I personally only have a few that I want to discuss, so I think that might be more efficient. So if we could start with Site Number One, which is the site I think the public comment was about, is there any commissioner who would like to discuss that recommendation?
Through the chair, I'd just say that it's nice to hear public comment regarding that site and that there's already some plans there to put a new facility together that would provide, you know, meaningful contribution to the city. So I was just very encouraged about that.
Through the chair. That is the one site that I am vaguely familiar with, or I have some familiarity with it. And I know that the city and the applicant or that the owner have worked diligently to come up with some solutions to get as much housing as they can on that site. And as Ms. Nixon Reverend Nixon noted, that is an extremely high priority for the owner of the property to help people who are transitioning out of or into adulthood, if you will. And I'm really excited to see it's on this list, and hopefully it will help move this project forward and get those houses built sooner than later. Thank you.
I agree about that.
Great. I have no comments on that site either. So why don't we, it sounds like there's not really a lot of discussion on that one, so why don't we go ahead and move to Site Number Two, if anybody wants to discuss that one. Seeing no interest in discussing Site Number Two, let's go on to Site Number Three. No takers for Site Number Three. How about Site Number Four? Nope. Okay, Site Number Five? Nope. Site Number Six? This one's on my list. Is it on anybody else's list? Okay. Would you be able to pull up the appendix that shows the current use and the recommended change in use for Site Number Six? I can check and see which page it is. It's the fifth page, I think, of the document? Yes, of the, let's see, Exhibit A, sorry.
Through the chair, we may have that as a backup slide. Do we have a backup slide for that? Can we just pull up through the presentation? Thank you.
Through the chair, so this is changing it from residential to mixed use?
That is correct. That is the recommendation. Yeah.
And I think we actually had a discussion about this.
We did indeed, and I was wondering if you would remember that. That's why I wanted to discuss it.
I was advocating it to be changed to mixed use because the block continues with some commercial down on the floor levels.
Yes, so if, to back up a few steps and potentially years, I remember discussing the site on the general plan subcommittee, and Commissioner Nugent or Vice Chair Nugent was with me on the general plan subcommittee at the time. And my memory of the discussion of this is that there were a few of the general plan subcommittee members who, as you just said, thought that this specific, these specific parcels might work as a better use to be mixed use because most of B Street along that stretch is mixed use, and the opposing opposite side of the street parcels are mixed use. Then there was another position, which was they might be better served as residential because the rest of the block is residential. There's already fairly high-density existing residential adjacent to Central Park. And I was originally of your opinion, and I got convinced on the general plan subcommittee that they should be residential because someone had made the point that if everything along B Street is mixed use, there is the potential that everything could be developed as commercial. And do we want to at least designate some part of B Street as residential so that we can have a higher likelihood of having residential redeveloped on B Street? And then this specific spot was discussed because the other uses are already high-density residential. And I know since then, we've now had conversations about potentially having minimum density uses in our mixed-use projects, and that might be a topic that comes up in the future. But that was the discussion I remember from the general plan subcommittee, and just based on that discussion, I'm a little concerned about the change on these sites.
Well, through the chair, I mean, I'm still, I still believe what I did way back then. I think that's, this is something that should be addressed in the future when we're designating, you know, like minimum amounts of residential and what proportion we might need or street-level requirements that we, you know, like updating what we currently have for street-level commercial in downtown. And I think having something that accommodates what's currently there is probably better and allows for the flexibility to continue to have commercial, especially at the ground floor, so.
Are those existing parcels, do we know if those existing parcels are currently developed as residential or are they currently developed as commercial?
They're commercial. So that's where like the, it used to be the paint store in where Tap Plastics is and a few other things. There's Espitas, I think, the Brazilian Steakhouse is there. And so those are all commercial uses right now.
Through the chair, this includes, at the end there, you have the, isn't it Bethlehem Plaza or something?
I think, I don't remember the name, but it's, there's a coffee shop on the end, and there's like
Sama Coffee Shop. And there has been a proposal that's come before us for the Kelly Paints Tap Plastics site that, if I remember correctly, is mixed use. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and this would just make it conforming in the future. And it's mostly residential.
Well, yet if we do go to mixed-use medium two, as the chair has mentioned, it could simply go to fully commercial. Is that true? Or would there be a minimum of residential required?
Through the chair, the mixed-use designation is intended to allow for a mix of uses. However, you could have solely commercial uses or solely residential uses as well, unless, as we develop standards around the downtown area plan or other development standards within the zoning code, we specify that there has to be a minimum residential requirement. So at this point, a solely commercial use could probably go within a mixed-use designation.
And one of the reasons for bringing forward this recommendation is, one, recognizing we do have existing commercial uses here, and we don't want to result in them becoming non-conforming. Also, there have been discussions about how the future of B Street operates, functions, a ped mall expansion, any number of things. And I think recognizing the importance of this corridor and what ground-floor commercial can add to that as opposed to 100% residential, the thinking is allowing for a range of uses. This would not preclude 100% residential, but we could also want to promote a ground-floor commercial with residential floor commercial with residential above. And so a mixed use land use designation ensures that we have that flexibility as we move forward, especially into an update to our downtown area plan.
I think I said it was Bethlehem. It's Nazareth Plaza.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's Nazareth Plaza is included in this at the end there, that largest section of site six.
So through the chair, Zach, if I understand you correctly, it could be, it could be zoned for commercial on a ground floor and residential from everything above or no?
It could be, yeah. I mean, the mixed use designation is the use that allows for maximum flexibility. You could have all residential, you could have all commercial, you could have a mix. That's the intent of this land use. And then the zoning would kind of refine that. Also, in this case, the downtown area plan also will provide guidance into the uses that go in. So both the downtown area plan and the zoning code would then build on this land use designation to probably refine and look more closely at different blocks and how all of those uses could come together.
I mean, I think a lot of good points have been made. I'm, I'm fine if we recommend that it change to mixed use, especially since there's existing commercial there already.
Is there, excuse me, through the chair one more time. And I fully grasp the concern that the existing use could be out of compliance if it were, if it went directly or solely to residential. Yet if, is there a way around that where you are actually able to zone it where you could, you could have the same square footage of the existing commercial use only and then build above that with a residential so you're not out of compliance?
That would be something that kind of would be more specific than we would get into in the general plan. And if we're looking at the downtown area plan, you might get to that level of specificity if you're wanting to transition an area but maintain existing legal uses there. So there's different ways to do that. Also, the discussion about setting minimum densities in mixed use projects, that'll be another policy discussion that will be moving forward later this year.
Through the chair, that's what the mixed use designation would allow.
Correct.
As opposed to.
Right. I understand, but the mixed use, there could be considerably more commercial there than there currently is.
Yes. Like for this window of time when interest rates are high and we're about to update our.
Yeah. Well, it's all a timing thing. It always is. You know, can you get your implementation plans in place prior to a proposed development that's going to come in and do all commercial? So it's always a timing discussion that you have. If you catch, if you catch the property in time before the developments come in, that might be proposed, that might be fully commercial. So that's always the gamble too.
Yeah.
But I'm not, I'm not opposed to this. Thank you for bringing.
Sure.
The subject up. I appreciate that.
Through the chair, if I can add, the current zoning for that strip of B Street is already zoned for mixed use. And so we've seen projects come in that mostly for that strip have ground floor retail or commercial and then residential is built above it.
Any more comments on site number six or should we move on?
No.
Okay, great. Site numbers seven and eight, I think we could do together if anybody would like to discuss it since it's the Arbor Rose condominiums and the vacant parcel next to the Arbor No comments? I had a small comment, which is anytime I see a reduction in the intensity of housing, it does give me pause. But in this case, we as a commission have discussed many times the proximity of this site and this street to 101 and building housing that close to highly trafficked roadways. I think in this case, I'm not, I'm not concerned about changing the use to reflect what is currently there.
Yeah, through the chair, just looking at that site, you know, it's recently, relatively recently constructed. The portion behind it is a relatively narrow strip. I'd be very curious to see if anything was proposed there in the future. And yeah, just bringing it into alignment makes sense.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Let's see. Next is site nine. Would you mind showing the list again? I don't have that one in my notes, so I can't remember which one it is. It's an El Camino Real site.
Is what's on the screen helpful?
Yes, thank you. Any comments about site number nine? Any comments about site number 10? This was one of the ones that was flagged by the city council.
I'm sorry, it was one of what?
It was one of the two sites on the list that the city council asked be reexamined. The existing use is, or existing use and existing designation under general plan 2040 is office medium, and the proposal is to change the designation to mixed use high.
My only comment is I'm glad that they did that and I appreciate it. And this is what I had wanted. I don't know if I had mentioned it before, but this is what I was hoping to happen. So it does give more flexibility in the future.
The chair, is that the site that has the restrictions placed on it for development because of the environmental components that may be there?
No, it is the site on the other side of Bobbit Road that is also shown as mixed use.
Okay.
I think this mixed use high, medium, mixed use medium currently. No more comments on site 10? Great. I see Commissioner Clafter thinking.
Through the chair, no, I was just thinking about that location in terms of, you know, what could, what could eventually come in there, future accessibility and sort of surrounding that section of residential medium behind it there and directly adjacent to the off ramp. But those might be concerns for a future time.
Vice Chair Nugent?
That is, there's already commercial there right now. And so this would just help conform the existing uses.
Any comments? This was another one of the ones on my list. I flagged this one again because anytime we're moving from residential to mixed use, it makes me concerned about the risk of how much residential will actually get developed. In this case, I think the proximity to the clover leaf and the access issues that have already been discussed made me feel like mixed use could be better for this site. There is commercial there already, but it feels pretty underutilized. And so then I also wonder if maybe that's not the best use for the site, but having it be a mixed use designation would provide more flexibility.
Through the chair, you know, that part of the El Camino, I think, struggles with the commercial. Those properties have been turned over, or they turn over regularly. I think part of it has to do with the ability or the inability of parking. It's always a challenge on both sides of that clover leaf, if you will. It's a mess. And I don't know how, I don't even know how retail spaces survive in that area because it's so difficult just to access them. So I wouldn't want to live on it on the ground floor level anyway, but I'm not so sure how commercial fares there.
It sounds like we don't have any concerns about the change in use.
No.
Okay, great. I think this might be the meaty one.
Just, I agree that changing this to mixed use is a good thing. I would say we did have a lot of discussion about residential close to the highway, but considering what's currently there, you know, I think it's an opportunity site.
Through the chair, I just say, you know, yeah, I mean, if the, if there's any site that has, you know, potential for new housing, this is probably it in this list. So, and if the, you know, if the owner of the hotel is committed to closing the hotel, then we want something there.
Through the chair, I think it was our environmental expert who used to sit on this, who didn't admit to being an environmental expert. He did not like that title. But I think that the air quality in this area for all housing makes it very suspect in my mind of how we are going to provide safe, healthy housing, mostly for children and seniors. We are caught in a conundrum with having some of our larger sites adjacent to very high amounts of air contaminants. And it's shocking to me that we have not been able to find appropriate sites through other areas in this city to meet our housing demands and projections. And quite frankly, I'm saddened that our choices are greatly limited when it has to do with air quality and how are we going to address those concerns? The state has not given us guidelines, and we don't have specific guidelines to how to alleviate the issues. When you look at these sites and you look at the descriptions, they do note that there's air quality problems and each one of them are said to be, we will address them as they come forward. So it will be interesting to me to see as a member of the public, how these sites are addressed because I think it's going to take a lot of effort and concentrated concern as these developments move forward. This is a horrible intersection as it has to do with, with health. And it's, it's the reality, we don't have a lot of other places to build, but it's a shame that so many people are going to be exposed to this height of air contaminants once these properties are built.
Thank you. Anything else? So I'll say I share your concerns. As you remember, I brought this up a lot during the planning commission's discussions about the general plan and also when I was on the general plan subcommittee. And so this one, I think of all the sites, this is the recommendation I'm most uncertain about. The adjacency of that site to that intersection and the Cal EnviroScreen 4.0 data for that intersection is not great. And I think if this was developed as, it could be developed in a way with, this actually came up, I think, in one of the conversations we had where if you did multiple buildings and you used taller buildings along the highway to create almost a screen to residential buildings that were sheltered by like taller commercial buildings, you could, you could potentially mitigate some of these impacts. But at this point, we can't control that. And so I'm nervous about this one. I'm also nervous about the transition to the adjacent site. I believe that there's been discussions of a potential townhouse project on the adjacent site, which I think from the light blue color is residential low. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that'd be a mixed use designation.
Oh, it's a mixed use.
It allows up to 50 units per acre.
Okay. So I think that lighter blue is mixed use low. So having a mixed use low next to a mixed use high also makes me a little bit nervous.
Through the chair, if I could add, so there is a development proposal as well to the north of the site 12, which is.
I was talking about the north, sorry, the site to the north.
Yeah, so the site to the north, that's mixed use medium one. And there is a development proposal currently for townhomes at that site. That's SB 330 pre-application that staff is reviewing.
Great. So we potentially have townhomes coming into that site immediately to the north and then could be adjacent to something that is mixed use high. So this is where I, I am leaning towards a mixed use medium so the transition isn't abrupt and so that we aren't potentially developing a lot of residential on an unhealthy
Through the chair, I disagree. I don't think we need a transition there. The people who will move into those townhomes will know that this is mixed use medium. They know, they know what they're buying into. And I think that kind of concern is overblown for transitions. I think whoever buys a townhome in this potential development will be happy with whatever. It's a great city. The fact that there's a couple more stories next to them, I don't think is going to matter.
Through the chair, I was listening to the comments just now and I was, suddenly had flashbacks to evening commutes inching my way forward, you know, to the 92 interchange and, and suddenly was thinking about all of the exhaust, you know, I was probably, myself and all the other commuters are probably contributing. And I know that there is a proposal to, to a rebuild of that, of the interchange there too at some point in the future. I don't, you know, that's obviously up to Caltrans and, and, you know, may or may not happen, who knows? But, you know, that also will probably increase the throughput and it means, ultimately ends it means more cars going through there in theory faster, but probably not for that long. And yeah, I mean, I definitely, it's a, you know, in terms of, in terms of reducing the exposure to those types of pollutants, it's not ideal. And anyone who does build there is going to have to, I think, you know, present some solution for that when they, when they put a proposal forward.
So through the chair, I don't want to put, take light of your concerns. Yet if you do have a mixed use high next to the townhomes, maybe the mixed use high could benefit as a barrier from some of the pollution blowing into it. I don't know. I don't know. Could help.
Possibly.
With the north wind.
Yep.
I would, my concern, well, not only the political side or the pollution side, but I'm always concerned with the shadows. You know, you build up, you build some nice townhomes that have some nice sun and then all of a sudden you're blocking part of it out. That makes it less comfortable for me to even envision living there because it's going to be cooler to a certain degree. But I don't know what the shadows would be, but who knows?
Yeah. Through the chair, I think, I think that these are very large sites and we're not talking a significant difference proportionally in height that's allowed between a mixed use medium and mixed use high. You know, if it was like, if it was like 50% to 100% higher, then it would probably be noticeable, but you're not going to notice that from your home. It's just, I don't think that's going to be an issue, having mixed use high next to the mixed use medium from height. I mean, if you look at it, it's, you know, anywhere from, we're talking maybe three stories in a, in a span of. anywhere from, we're talking maybe three stories in a, in a span of eight indifference. So yeah, I don't, I, I don't think, this is, these are large sites, like you're not going to notice. And it's, it's, I, it's almost imperceptible difference in quality of life between having a mixed use high versus mixed use medium next to you in this context. I'm just, I, I think, I think that this is the right thing to do, even if, even given air quality concerns and such. It, this is a site that's relatively close to the Caltrain. It's a site that's, you know, going to be close hopefully if, if future plans occur to, you know, grocery store, things like that. So I, I think that, you know, as long as the developer can mitigate environmental issues, and again, we're not, this isn't about the rest of the, of the rest of the city. Like, we don't have the ability to make additional changes to the rest of the city. I think having this site go to mixed use high is, is a net benefit for the city, in my opinion. Even given the, the challenges of the location next to the highway.
The, the site has its own unique advantages and disadvantages. And I don't want to argue this to death, but just living in a R1 now and I have neighbors and I'm in just one level and I have neighbors kind of far away from me, but still they can see into my backyard. Just those two, that separation in height itself in the past used to affect my use of my property. I did not like that and I've gotten used to it. So I, I, I think the difference in height can make a difference to the, to the people who are actually experiencing it. I don't think it's, I don't think it's inconsequential. I also think that to go ahead and go with the mixed use high isn't going to make that big of a difference in this site. I don't like it, I don't like the site, but I, my concern with the people next door is their air quality, their sunshine and their privacy. And I think that it will be impacted in a certain manner. Maybe not that much difference from going from an R1 or whatever townhouse to three to five stories, might not be that big of a difference to your point, Adam, but it will make a difference. There, there will be some impact on, on the quality of their life in my experience.
I, I'm, I'm going to disagree, but I, you know, I think it has to come, it comes down to expectations. I mean, these are new homes that potentially could be built and the people there are moving into townhomes, which is just a very different living style, like you're closer to your neighbors, you just know, you'd like, it just feels different. And so it's much more of an urban context. So having that sort of relatively inconsequential transition, in my opinion, seems fine.
So I'll, I'll just add to this. I'm, I'm so torn, this, this particular site feels so complex. And I'm looking back, I'm looking at the staff report and I'm looking at why this was flagged by city council. And, and it was, it was flagged by city council to, to potentially increase flexibility and housing production potential. So there's part of me that feels like the flexibility here is good because this is one of the cases where if something is mixed use and it's developed entirely as commercial, I don't think that's a bad thing because of the health concerns that I have and because of the proximity to Caltrain and the proximity to other residential, it feels like actually a pretty good spot for commercial and office because the access is really good. On the other hand, if, if council is interested in housing development at this site, then it feels like a residential use would provide a greater guarantee that would happen, although that is not personally something that I am comfortable with because of the proximity to 101. So I'm, I'm a little bit torn on, on how to interpret their direction in, in this way.
Through the chair, just to provide a little insight or kind of context to that, one of the things that's very important to the city from an economic development potential is the, the TOT, the transit occupancy tax that comes from a hotel or lodging use. And so the importance of keeping it mixed use is also to the notion that we could get a lodging use of some sort, maybe not to the scale and size that it was, but as part of any project, and that would be a priority for the city. So I think that's also an important aspect of keeping the mixed use is that a lodging component, we would, we would actively push for and see what opportunities could exist as part of any project that comes forward to look at that.
Thank you.
I'd rather not delve into the transit oriented tax at this time.
I, I think if a majority of my fellow commissioners are okay with this change, I would, I would be okay with it too. It's just, this is the one site I think I have the most reservations about.
Through the chair, I just think it really, really is going to depend on what ends up being proposed there. You know, the shadows on backyards of townhomes or the ability of someone from a taller building to peer into a, you know, someone else's home, you know, that, those types of things can be mitigated through design. And, you know, hotel, a new hotel, smaller hotel building could be placed nearer the road to, and the residences could be placed a little further away or an office building closer to the, to highway 101, a little further away. I mean, there, there, there are lots of things that, you know, we just can't exactly, you know, see how it's going to be now. I think keeping the flexibility there is always probably for the best.
Okay. And then we have site 13. Any, any comments on our last site? It was not on my list. Nope.
No.
Okay. Can we look at the text of the recommended resolution? All right, so based on our discussion of the sites, I don't think that we have any, any sites where we would disagree with the recommended change. Does that sound right?
That's my understanding.
Okay, great. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll second that.
And for a vote, Chair Patel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Abner?
Yes.
Commissioner Clafter?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams is absent.
Thank you. All right, last item, reports and announcements. Do we have any reports and announcements from staff or the city attorney?
Yes, we have a few from staff since you're having a meeting after such a long time. It's really nice to see everybody. Good evening, Manu Asanti, Planning Manager. So we have a training coming up. This will be by the 21 elements. This is happening this Thursday on January 30th. It's going to be a housing legislation training. So I know a few of our commissioners have signed up for that. The February Planning Commission meetings, we do expect both of our February meetings to occur. On February 11th, we anticipate bringing forward code amendments to implement some of the policies in our housing element and also to make amendments to fully implement Measure T. And then February 28th, we are looking at two business items. One, which would be a special use permit for the former boys and girls site to support a community service use and an appeal of an SB 9 application that was approved at the zoning administrator level. So that's what's lining up for the next month. My understanding is that Commissioner Williams will be absent for February 11th. So we would appreciate knowing if any of the other commissioners plan to be absent or would be remote so that we can plan accordingly.
Through the chair, would you like to know that right now?
If possible.
I, I will be present.
I'll be here.
I'll also be here for both meetings.
As will I.
Perfect, thank you. Then we will have quorum.
Excellent.
In addition to the two meetings in February, there's also going to be a chair and vice chair training for all the city boards, committees and commissions on February 13th. So our city clerk is organizing that. In March, early in March, we'll have the Planning Commissioners Academy. And my understanding is that we have four commissioners who are signed up, which is great. So I'm hopeful that that'll be a great event.
I'll be speaking on a panel.
Oh.
I'll be speaking on the Planning Commissioners 101 panel.
Oh, that's great. And then finally, my understanding is that the city clerk may have sent out some forms and surveys for all the commissioners and they may have come to you individually. So if you could please check your inboxes and respond, that would be really appreciated. So we don't have to follow up individually with you guys. But I think that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Any notes from our fellow commissioners? Nope. All right, I think that concludes the meeting. We are adjourned.
You haven't been hitting the kids?